Content Warning: This series contains all manner of edgelord content. It's all meant to be humorous comedy and none of it is a slide against others, but nevertheless, this is your warning that the Remembering Wesley episodes contain strong language, sex jokes, racial jokes, racial slurs, weight jokes, gender jokes, religious jokes, and on and on. Mature audience only viewer discretion advised, blah blah, you know the deal.
Alright, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Washington County Board of Education for Wednesday, March 26th, 2006. If everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will add your biological and technological distinctiveness to our own. Your culture will adapt to serve us. Resistance is futile.
Alright, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First on the agenda is the Student Board Member Report. Ashton?
Alright, good evening, everybody. My name is Ashton Baker, and I'm the student member of the Board of Education. This month was very busy. We had a successful outing to San Francisco, where we studied the native havens and degenerates, and the medical students learned a great deal about anatomy from the nudist parades. I don't think any of us will ever recover from the mental scars.
What is the dirtiest thing that you've ever seen in real life?
Define dirty.
I don't know, you define dirty. We'll just pick something from your history.
Um, can I go first?
And I'm not talking pornography, I'm talking like in face to face, like in real life. Yeah, go for it. And it could be one of the dirtiest, doesn't have to be the dirtiest, I guess.
The streets of San Francisco are covered in shit, and needles, and garbage, and a lot of naked homeless people. That's probably, um, the winner for me. Uh, and the other kinda dirty, no comment.
And so, those are just a few of the heavily censored photos we took there, and as soon as this meeting is over, I'm going to head out back and kill myself.
Okay, so we have no recognitions or public hearings tonight, but clearly we have public comment. So here's the way this is going to go. So, for those of you who signed up on this list, and you actually gave me a subject, I'm going to group you together. I'm also going to group you by school, so John Gubler, you can come up. So we welcome public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not comment. It's not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of staff or students. You have three minutes. Mary is going to keep the timer, so if you hear it, go off. Please wrap up your statements, so I don't have to cut you off. Okay, John, you're up.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I think I can say, on behalf of all the citizens of Washington County, that it's valuable that our voices are heard, and that we have a say in matters concerning our children. Um, I think that, um, I think the student's trip to San Francisco just goes to show that, our values align very differently with other parts of the world. In fact, I would argue that we actually have values at all, and that those gosh darned degenerates hold nothing sacred in life. And by golly, I'll be gosh darned if Joseph Smith himself doesn't come down and wipe out every-
John, John, do you have any comments pertaining specifically to the Washington County schools?
No, sorry, yeah. I think the school should teach French. Thank you.
Do what about?
Oh, so you're that kinda Asian? Rush Asian?
We were wondering what your other half was.
Oh, I'm not a Hatzie.
Oh, you're pure Chinese?
No, I'm a quarter Chinese.
Everything is Chinese except his mustache.
I got my mustache dirty Sanchez on purpose, just to confuse people.
Do people ever walk up to you and just start speaking Spanish to you?
I can see todo el mundo.
Oh shit. I don't think I've ever heard a Chinese person speak Spanish before.
Well, I wouldn't call this people, but, uh, what language y'all know?
American.
Yeah, I don't think we got what the question was there.
Yeah.
All I heard was ano.
What did you say?
Oh, what other languages do y'all know?
Uh, I took, uh, two quarter, three quarters of Spanish, so, and I used to talk Spanish with my, um, breakfast lady at the hotel, so I can do very, 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 very basic Spanish, very basic.
Same here. And then I know, uh, one or two French Canadian cuss words.
I actually took French, but I sound like a complete hillbilly trying to speak it, so I never really fostered it. I know very little now.
I think I can say up your butt in German.
I'm pretty sure you could say up your butt in any language.
Okay, thank you, John. Hannah Stuckey, are you here? You can come up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Hannah Stuckey, grandmother of students graduated from, currently enrolled in, and soon to be enrolled in, the public schools. I'm a former National Board Certified Teacher, and now very happily retired. I have a deep concern with what I've been hearing about the cafeterias in our high schools and middle schools. When I was teaching, we had healthy food options available for students, and now I've come to find that the schools have given up on funding and provisions for healthy student meals, and instead outsourced our kids' lunches to fast food restaurants. One specifically is Arby's, which is overpriced, creepy, greasy, and anyone who eats there should be publicly labeled as an Arby's offender, and their presence made known to any neighborhood they live in, just like S E X offenders.
Maybe I'm just salty at Arby's because in middle school, um, we couldn't leave campus for lunch. So they have like a few vendors that would come in, and one of them was Arby's, and it was just always overpriced, but you'd end up going with it because you got tired of the other two. And-
What were the other two?
Yeah, dude, in middle school, we like, we had the fucking lunch lady, that was it. There were no fucking restaurants coming to our school.
What, 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 Wesley?
The cafeteria wasn't operational, like they, we had a lunch.
Okay, but what were the other two fucking restaurants, Wesley?
The one was like this Polynesian family had like a restaurant, and they'd bring, it was all like teriyaki chicken or some variation of it. Um, and the other was like Tex Mex. Um, and it was disgusting because they put cilantro on everything.
Oh no!
That seems impressively diverse for your little Mormon town back in the day.
Wait, Wesley, I like how you say that the kitchen was no longer like operational, like what happened there, like the Chernobyl happened, or?
I don't know if it was just like the school didn't wanna have to deal with it. Um, but it was a big school.
Other question, so did they, these people have to bring in like food trucks or something? Or did they just use the fucking kitchen, and so the kitchen was operational, they just didn't wanna fucking hire somebody?
They were in the kitchen, um, they would bring their food there and like kind of have it prepared already, and then just assemble it. So I just think the school district didn't wanna have to deal with, with food service.
Straight up.
They just outsourced it.
That's fucking hilarious. Those hardworking Mormon taxes, ladies and gentlemen. Bringing, bringing Arby's into our nation's schools. Arby's and Jesus.
Our kids are too good, are too good for, uh, french bread pizza and vegetable rolls.
Arby's.
I took a bag lunch every day, my mommy made me a sandwich.
Same.
I used to buy two lunches at school.
How was the homeschool lunch, Brian?
It was always pretty great.
Yeah?
You got a, you got a nice Uncrustable, uh, and?
My mother uncrusted them for me.
Aw, that's sweet.
Just yesterday, he's still working on his master's degree.
Thank you, Hannah. Bishop Hammer, you may come up.
I'm here to address the issue of our good LDS children not being instructed well enough for their eventual missions. We teach them to read, to write, we teach them math and science, we teach them biology, geology, but we don't teach them the important things in life, such as proselytization.
You don't got any topics for us tonight, do you?
Um, I hadn't thought of one. Uh, what are your guys-
Well, let me, let me ask you something real quick. Do you wear the temple garment underwear? This is the stuff we have to know right off the bat.
Not yet, uh, I'll be getting married this summer, and then I, and then I will be.
Okay, so you have to be married to get to that level?
Uh, no, um, I didn't go on a mission, that's typically when men start wearing it. But since I didn't go, I'll start wearing it as soon as I get married.
Yeah, that's cool.
Is it like comfy, or what's it made of?
Um, they have like, uh, a more silky kind, and then they have cotton as well. I'm just used to seeing what my dad has, and, and the shirts look just like a Hanes t-shirt. I've seen his top, and in laundry, I mean, I've seen-
No bottoms on your dad there?
No, thankfully.
So how much does it cost?
The underwear?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think it's very expensive, probably like five bucks a pair, I'm not sure.
Oh, that's not bad.
So they have like Nike or something like that, making them or anything?
Nineteen warm edition?
That would be pretty dope.
Every time you're scared to go knock on a door, you just think to yourself, just do it.
Just. Funny.
So why don't, why don't you care about people's souls?
I don't care about people's souls?
You didn't go on a mission.
Uh, well, I would say, I'm, I'm down with the cause, but I don't like being very preachy. And I've seen a lot of people I know go on missions, and it's changed them for the worse, I believe.
Hmm, interesting.
They've just got so used to speaking from that place of, I guess preaching, like you're saying, and maybe that's just how they became, you know?
Yes.
The thing that's always fascinated me about it is that it's similar to the military in that you don't know where they're gonna send you, right?
Right, you, you get a letter, um, shortly before you leave, and it could be anywhere.
Like literally any country?
Uh, except the Middle East, they, they usually don't send people there for obvious reasons, but-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you be sent to a dangerous place?
Um, not anymore, I don't think. I think they've, um, I think they've kind of changed that, so they, they only go to safe, safe places now, so.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, when you're an easy target, easy to spot, like in certain places, you just, just can't really be safe.
Yeah.
Right, and some places, you know, the, the concept of preaching, proselytizing is just totally taboo, so.
Oh, I told them that you're serious about going to San Francisco and meeting up with Tony.
I'm dead serious, yeah, I love San Francisco, uh, and if I could like meet him for dinner, I think that'd be pretty cool, yeah.
Why were you there before?
Uh, it was for a college honors class. It was all about like the, um, counterculture movement, the 50s and 60s, and at the end of the class, the university paid our airfare, and we went out for about a week.
That's crazy.
Yeah, it was fun.
I'm all for people paying me to travel.
Yeah. Well, people pay me to travel all the time.
Yeah, but your job sucks.
It's pretty much all I ever do. It's my life.
We need to teach our children what they believe in, so that they can tell other people what they believe in.
So Wesley, what, uh, what is God to you, and how does, uh, that being affect your life personally?
Well, you and I have talked about it a little bit, I think, um, I, I find that my belief in God is very comforting to me at times, and, um, quite often. And, uh, I, God in my life, it's, it's about, you know, having a, a moral compass, and obviously, and I'm, I don't mean like, if you don't have God, you can't be moral, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm just saying-
You don't need to justify yourself, Wesley, please, just explain what you're trying to explain.
I don't know, I, I don't know, it, it's, it's easy to, to think about life, and, and, and think, well, if I do this, if I follow the rules, if, you know, I try my best, if I'm a good person, you know, the worst that can happen is that I die, and I, I stop existing. But I believe that, you know, if you're a good person, you're rewarded in the afterlife. And, um, Mormonism, uh, has a big influence on family, and, and, you know, we believe you're, you're with your family in heaven, and, and that really shapes, you know, not just my, my own personal being, but my whole social structure. Um, and so there's the orthodoxy and, uh, of it in, in my everyday life, but it's also just very comforting. And, you know, sometimes I get discouraged, and I, I have, um, bad nerves, pretty, pretty bad anxiety, and, um, I find that my faith, um, definitely helps comfort me when I have problems. I don't, and it's-
Do you believe that there has ever been a time where, um, like the Holy Spirit has directly helped you with something, like? Again, I hope that that's not like a condescending question, because I don't mean it to be.
He lent me five bucks one time.
Shit!
Oh my god.
Um, I don't think I've had any like, you know, hand of God, like, um, experience or anything like that, or the Holy Spirit like, um, changing something in my life, but I, I definitely believe that I have been comforted by, by the Holy Spirit at difficult times in my life, just, you know, in my own emotional self, you know, I feel that, uh, I've felt something, if that makes sense.
I think that counts.
That's useful.
But-
And approach them as ideologies, as opposed to like, you know, religious people or religion, and you just say to yourself, you can believe that, until you try to force somebody else to believe it too, and then we have a problem, that's it, like cut and dry there. I like the way you put it, don't impose it on anybody else, and we're cool. Go believe in unicorns.
Well, like, what do you guys think about, uh, the fact that Christianity does, it does say in the Bible that you're supposed to, you know-
Evangelize? But is it by force?
You know what the fuck that means? Well, no, I mean not by force, but I mean technically, some people consider it to be incredibly annoying to constantly have, you know what I mean? Like I was just curious.
I'm sorry, hold up, hold up, I'm sorry, uh, the Bible says to do what?
To evangelize?
Evangile-
Spread the word of God. Does it say, or what does it say?
Spread the word of God.
Well, here's what I, here's what I had to say. We're on a podcast talking about it, and I told you what I thought.
You tricked us, you son of a-
I don't feel, and I've, I've, I've gone through this multiple times. I don't have to go door to door. The, the conversation popped up at the hotel one day in the lobby, and I told them what I thought, like, and, and people have remarked on the way that I've lived, they say, you know, you, you seem to care about people, and like, I, I, I don't, I don't think it would be loving for me to go door to door and annoy people.
Yeah.
Like, it wouldn't fit within my ideology.
Well, I was curious to hear what Wesley thought about it.
Okay, Wesley?
Well, I think that, uh, I think it's okay to evangelize, I think, uh, I think it should be encouraged sometimes if it's something you personally feel strong, strongly about. But, uh, I think sometimes you can go a little too far with it, and get too preachy, and be insensitive to different ideas.
I think I should mention that I do love when people evangelize to me, because I'm just interested in different cultures and religions, but that's beside the point. Go ahead, Wesley.
Well, Mormons are famous for it, obviously.
Yeah.
But I didn't go on a mission, because I, I have a, a personal, what's the word? Disagreement with, with how the missionaries are, are supposed to, uh, conduct themselves. I think the training for missionaries is insufficient. You know, you get these teenagers, fresh out of high school, with a rudimentary understanding of theology at best. And, uh, I, I don't know, I've seen, I've seen things go awry with it, but I'm getting into weeds. I think it should be, be done, um, with caution, and with respect in mind. You know, the, the concept of crusading, you know, preaching the word, and you know, making it your, your mission. Oh boy, um, I don't know, I, I disagree with it being super preaching, you know?
Why, just last October, my grandchildren were over for Thanksgiving, and the schools hadn't even taught them to say a proper Thanksgiving prayer. Hoah! And don't get me started on Christmas and New Years.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a great show coming up tonight, but first things first, I would like to say, welcome back, Wesley.
Well, uh, thank you. Uh, I'd like to let everyone know that my heart is fine, and, uh, much, much larger, so, uh, it's good to be back.
Did you, did you have a happy Mormon Thanksgiving?
I did, I did, I was, well, I had two Thanksgivings. One with my large extended family, and one just with like my wife, and mother, and siblings. And both of them were crazy for their own reasons, so. How was your guys' Thanksgivings, or did you discuss it in a past episode?
Yeah, you missed that, you're, you're playing catch up right now. Pretty much you're the only one who gets to tell Thanksgiving stories today. Actually, I don't know if we heard from Alex, but I don't know if anyone cares.
Yeah, nobody cares.
Yeah, what is Jewish Thanksgiving like? Is it like eight days long, but it's like not really as intense?
Jewish Thanksgiving, they just have a turkey sandwich every day for seven days. And on the final day, you get the cranberry sauce, maybe a side of stuffing.
So, um, and also the, the last one that, that is, um, notable on my list at least, is, uh, Dolores O'Reardon from, uh, The Cranberries.
Hmm.
With that thanks, and that bomb, and that-
Wow.
Hello?
Forgot about that one. Wesley!
Wait, Wesley?
What?
We didn't think you were gonna be here.
Hello? I didn't think I was either, but, um, oh my hell.
Did, uh, Mormon, did Mormon New Years come early?
Yeah, we, we aren't, uh, we aren't a partying bunch much, so, uh, I'm not recording myself.
Once you guys were out of earwine, you were just like, okay, honey, let's get out of here.
The six pack of Dr. Pepper went fast.
Oh yeah. We went to the fair, to the, to the town New Year's Eve party, and, uh, we had dinner, but we paid twenty, twenty-five bucks for a family of six to get dinner, and then they had some activities, so it wasn't that bad.
Was it a downtown celebration in Hootenanny?
Oh yeah, it was, it was a real, a real shindig. And they had the worst, um, oh, what are they called? Uh, hypnotist in Utah.
Oh yeah, I was so glad that you said hypnotist, and not something that I was gonna be embarrassed of.
Oh, yeah. So, yep. Then we just went to the gas station and got a soda and came home, so I'm good for the night.
Nice.
So this is going to be a strange episode, because, uh, since Tim was shutting down all of my topics last week, I made him and Alex pick the topics this week? So, we're kicking the podcast off with, uh, bald people, should they be allowed to live?
Brian, how dare you, you didn't even ask me how my Christmas was, you bald whore, okay?
Mormons have Christmas?
Yes.
Mormon Christmas is in April.
How'd, uh, how'd Christmas go for you, Wesley?
Well, you know, we convened in Missouri, as is our indigenous tradition, and, um, for Christmas, I got my second wife. As is tradition.
Wow, that's a pretty good Christmas.
Here's an even better question, though. Did your little brother get his, uh, his horse and, uh, the suit for said horse?
Yes, he did. It was a good year for the Sullivan's.
So you both got a wife?
We both got a beast of burden, is what we got.
Now, is this an, is this an annual thing? Is this something you have to do every single year?
No.
Okay.
It aligns with the moon chart. See, you plot it out, it goes from your wedding day to the next Christmas, to the third Valentine's, and so forth.
No wonder you didn't know New Year was a week after Christmas, you got a lot to keep track of.
But yeah, the, the little miniature horse with the, um, with the chromosome problem is amazing.
That's a very nice way of saying the target.
It's chromosome, chromosome gifted. So do you think bald people should be allowed to live?
No.
No.
Thank you, Bishop. Last of all, we have Henry Bettinson, you may come up.
I'm here to say one thing, and one thing only. Washington County schools need to put stronger emphasis on their football teams.
They should have been the Salt Lake City Swarm.
The Salt Lake City Swarm?
The Swarm?
As in bees.
The Swarm and Mormons?
The Swarm, oh, great name. The Salt Lake, the Salt Lake Swarm and Mormons, it's one of the best few names I've heard.
Salt Lake Sister Wives.
Swat the Mormon away, here it comes.
That would be the NBA.
Yo, you gonna watch the Sister Wives game later today?
Everybody on the, everybody on the Sister Wives team is, has to wear skirts.
Denim dresses, yeah.
Oh, look at you, Philip Rivers, you have a proper sized family. Oh, look at you, Philip Rivers. You have a proper sized family.
You just Googled Philip Rivers once?
I just Googled Philip Rivers. I don't know why.
Ten kids and Wesley had to go and buy a poster because Philip Rivers is his new fucking hero.
Yo, Wesley, Wesley, you can join me in the Philip Rivers Band Club. I mean, bro, you could be a Chargers fan. Oh, man. This is how I'm gonna get Wesley in a football. This is exactly this is how I'm gonna do it. Just like how many kids Philip Rivers has.
Or you could just bribe him with insulin with your connection.
Like, hey, Wesley, I've been stealing ins- insulin from the medical college.
They should do an NFL calendar, but with the families, like the biggest families in the NFL, I'd buy that calendar.
Wesley, let me send you a picture of Philip Rivers' family. I'll send you a nice.
Okay. Make it my phone wallpaper.
And if you at home would like a picture of Philip Rivers' family, just uh become a patron of ours. And Alex will send you a picture.
I I don't know why I'm so giggly.
Do not under any circumstance just Google Philip Rivers' family because that is unacceptable and they're all trademarked and copyrighted. You have to give us money specifically.
No, but this would be a hand selected picture of Philip Rivers' family.
By the biggest Philip Rivers dick rider that's ever existed.
All right, I just.
Okay.
I sent it to the chat.
Oh, wow.
That's a nice family.
Look at them. They're all wearing their Mormon white vestments.
They're not Mormon. I can be fitted as like Christian fundamental or whatever.
They could be. I'll make them Mormon.
Wesley, they could be. Just frothing at the mouth. They could be. I'm gonna get to them. I'm going, I'm going to Los Angeles. I'll tell you what comes out of high water. That Rivers family, they're gonna be Mormon. Do you hear me?
I can't tell if Wesley's having a heart attack or whether he's laughing.
I think he really did drink whiskey tonight.
I could just see it now, though. Wesley shows up at Philip Rivers' doorstep, knocks on the door and he's like, excuse me, Mr. Rivers. Does this rag smell like chloroform to you?
Then Wesley, then Wesley's like in a bunker. Wesley's in like an underground bunker with Mitt Romney trying to.
I I fucking know, dude.
You know what, Tim? I do need a skull it. You're right. And I need to go back to using floppy disks.
A skull it would fit your personality better than anything that you've ever done in your entire life, but you do need to shave the beard then.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, you need a mustache, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
What, Brian, do you think you could bring the Hitler stash back?
No, I think that he needs to do. He needs to do the fucking um, what do you call it? Uh, the ones where it the handlebar mustache that comes down over the like around your chin.
Also, I really will be Hulk Hogan.
Yeah, basically, except for not strong or cool. Yeah, the lobster fisherman.
Lobster fisherman mustache.
I think I think.
Okay, just Google that.
Wesley's Wesley's two previous searches are lobster fisherman mustache and Philip Rivers' family.
Correct. Okay, this is, I don't like this one bit. Why did you make me look at it?
We don't even know what you're looking at. You typed in a really weird thing for something that you didn't need to.
I wanna look at Philip Rivers' family again.
Okay, so that concludes our agenda for tonight's meeting. Our next public hearing will be on April fourth and we will be discussing uh women. All right, we are adjourned.
The spell and when I woke up, very home.
What time? What time of the day did you lay down?
Noon, maybe. A little bit later. I I don't remember.
Does your husband spend much time at the mine?
He's he's been spending more and more time there since since Marie started making his life difficult.
Marie.
His hi- his first wife.
She's here in town.
Yeah, she lives on the edge of town.
Wow, he's got two. Sorry.
We know that your Mormon sensibilities are really happy about the fact that uh.
My Mormon sense is tingling.
No, um, you you get the sense that he divorced Marie for a a younger woman.
Okay.